So pleased to be able to be checking in with Quincy councillor at large Anne Mahoney for a chat about what's going on in her life and in the city during this pandemic. Hey Anne, nice to virtually see you.
Hey Joe, how are you? It's great to see you. So I miss everybody in person, but it is always nice to connect virtually.
Yeah, I'm glad we're able to do this and hopefully next time we could do it in person. But I thought it'd be a good opportunity to touch base and you know, see how you're doing personally, really, and then talk a little bit about how you think the city is doing.
Yeah, actually I have been, I'm one of the very lucky ones. I'm still working and if anything, I'm working longer days, harder hours. My, my whole organization is virtual and working from home. And there's just a lot of changes that are happening tightening in the financial world. So a lot of change is happening. And, and as much as, as much as you can do and learn about that is, is kind of where I'm at right now. We're doing a lot of research about what's, what's coming down the pike. So, and it's, no, it's, it's hard because we've never been through a pandemic. I never thought we would be in my lifetime. I know we prepare for these things, but as always, you know, you know, fire drills and different things we do, we never think we're going to actually have to live through them. So this has definitely been something that all of us have had challenges with.
No question, yeah. Have you, um, you know, give us some silver lightings in your life through this situation? And what, what are some of the good things that you think have come out of it?
Yeah, I think, I think sometimes we often focus on the negative, the things that we can't do, instead of really focusing on the ability to be able to get closer to your neighbors and to actually get closer to your family in a different way. My parents live up the street, so you know, we are very protective of them. We tease them, I tell them they're my, you know, they're my precious antiques and I have them in a museum and I have them vacuum sealed, so you know. It may not seem very nice, but it's, you know, mostly your family and, and people who are at high risk are most precious at this moment. And you know, what I was able to do with them is I got them a FaceTime portal and every night they call me and it's very cute, so we have, we do have virtual conversations. I do go, I, you know, I do go up to see them. I'm, I'm kind of more or less their, their connection to the world. My mom sits out on the porch, you know, and, and they both, actually they both sit on their front porch, but they're social distancing each at the other end to watch the neighbors. You're seeing, and the other thing, I think people are, you know, there's something that we haven't seen in a long time, everybody's home. So you see people out running, walking, riding their bikes, walking their babies, walking their dogs. Oftentimes we're in such a rush to get to our offices and to go other places that we don't have the ability to be here. So I do think as much as it is hard to social distance, it's, it's a time for us to reflect on what our lives are and what's important in our lives. Cause it's not going to be the same. When it all goes back, you know, we will have some, we will have differences. And I think we can appreciate, if you can take the moment to maybe block out the negativity of everything and appreciate the opportunity to, to see our world in a different light and to get to know each other better.
Yeah, I agree. That's one of the things I've noticed too, is there's, you know, so much less traffic that you're able to actually talk to your neighbor across the street, but maybe walk across, you know, within six feet and socialize.
Ride a bike.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, ride a bike.
Yeah.
You just walk in peace, you know, without having to wait at a crosswalk, so yeah.
I know a lot of people get frustrated in Quincy because many people still aren't following the rules. You know, there, you'll see, I got some phone calls yesterday about some, you know, kids that were riding bikes and didn't have masks on and congregating and not understanding those social risks. And, you know, and they're feeling like the city's not doing enough. But that also comes down to the individual families and how they're operating in their homes. And you know, we, all we can do is remind people that this is real and that, you know, we all have to, we all play a part in making our lives go back to normal. And hopefully, you know, what I like to say is I hope that the people who are not taking it seriously, I hope it doesn't impact the families. And you know, that is, that is the only thing. And so I try to remind people that we all have, we all play a part, just like being respectful. When people are not being respectful, you know, we, we have to play a part, but we have to remind people that, you know, that's what we need to do. I know I took a bike ride with my son to Mattapan and a Boston police officer was kind of walked, driving the path reminding people, you know, we were riding bikes, we had masks. He took them down if there was nobody around and put them on. But, um, you know, people were being reminded, police officers were riding along those paths, reminding people of that. So it's, we all play a part though.
Yeah, the governor's even said it many times during his updates is it's personal responsibility. There are, there's not going to be any fun police out there or what have you. You know, take it upon yourself to protect, to protect your neighbors.
Right. And you know, there's so many people who are vulnerable and we do have to remind ourselves that although I might, I might not be in that category, although I am, I like to tell people I am in that category. You know, I'm, I'm in my 50s, I, you know, I am fairly healthy, but we don't know. And we do have to remember that not everybody's in the same category. Like my next door neighbor, he's diabetic and has some issues. And right all around me, we have people that we, and you have to remember to ask, is there anything they need? What can we do for you? And you know, and how can we come together as a community to make sure, even though we can't be any, you know, we can't come into each other's houses, we can certainly connect. And that's the thing that is fantastic too, is just this, Joe. I mean, virtually connections and being able to talk to each other and check in with each other, which is great.
Yeah, if this had happened, you know, 20, 25 years ago, we would not be having conversation this way.
No, and I think the, I think the outcome would be different either. Although there's a lot of misinformation out there, but you know, if you read enough, you'll realize that the most important thing that you can do is, is you know, stay within your family network. Try to social distance and, and follow those rules. It's going to be, it's not going to be the summer that we all were hoping for, so.
No, that's for sure, yeah.
Especially like big parties.
Yeah. And city government has also managed to function because of this technology. What are the, what have those Zoom city council meetings been like, Anne?
Yeah, they're, they're, they can be challenging. I mean, you know, internet connections can be hard. You know, everybody's using the same internet connection. So sometimes it's a little bit wonky, as I like to say, but that goes to say with anything that we do, right? But I think it's been fairly successful and I think all in, all in all, everybody's got on board and has participated. And it's a little different asking questions, you know, it's, 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 it's a little, it's a little hard necessarily, you know, to be able to, to get that, especially if the connection's wonky. But you know, overall, we have been able to get business done. One thing that we haven't had really is that public process where, you know, where we have the public commentary. And I did watch, I was, I, I actually attended the zoning board and I saw how that worked. And it seemed to work, but there is, I do have hesitations about that because not everybody is connected or feels comfortable or knows how to participate at all levels. Like, like I said, my parents, who are, my dad's very active and very clear minded at 92 years old. He's amazed by the Facebook portal, but you know, he has a computer, but it's a little hard. We've done Zoom meetings with them too, and they're fun, but a little harder for him to participate. He spends a lot of time saying, thank you everybody for coming.
A natural born showman. So how do you think, you know, the, the city has responded to this crisis, Anne, overall?
Yeah, I have to applaud Ruth Jones. She really has stepped up and, and she has done a phenomenal job. I think some of the things that were tricky for her is that she needs the support. You know, when we make certain rules, like everybody has to wear masks and, you know, certain, certain, like supermarkets weren't enforcing that, you know, until the, until the administration, until the state actually said that it was, it was a requirement, the city, city made a rule, but didn't require it. And then when the state did, the city followed. So really what we're doing in Quincy is, and it's no offense to the way this might sound like, is that we're really just following the lead of state government, which is fine. That's what we should be doing, but we should also step up and follow. If we're going to follow those leads, we need to actually follow those leads, you know, you know, you know, don't just say it, do it. So, um, but we have, you know, the, it has been challenging. I know like the parks have all opened up and my youngest daughter Rory is a recreation worker. And her job is to make sure she polices the, she's, you know, she's one of the many kids that are making sure that, you know, proper, proper things are happening at the parks. At first I was thinking that's a little challenging for young kids, but they seem to be doing it. And, um, and we all, as again, I'll go back to, we all play a part because we cannot just rely on the Quincy police or just people, we need to actually all, you know, and I think it helps when a young, a younger person is doing it, then a younger person will follow that lead, I think as well.
Sure. What do you think about the governor's reopening plans and how that will impact the city?
Yeah, I, you know, I think there's a lot of pressure on the governor. I mean, there's a lot of people, it's very hard. Small businesses are hurting, restaurants are hurting, a lot of people are hurting. And that's one of the things that, that I remind people, even in city government, you know. The, the fact of the matter is, is that the, the layoffs didn't just happen to hospitality workers or restaurants or small businesses, they're happening across, across the board in all industries. You know, there are people who have lost their jobs, who have lost their paychecks, but also who have had percentages of their, their pay. I know many people who have had their salaries cut to keep the, to just to keep the doors open. They're all, the companies are all playing a part in doing that. And, but at the same time, we have been monitoring throughout the whole state, the levels that are coming at where we're at and trying to kind of put that curve in place. So it's, it's, it's important that we do it in a phased approach and I do agree with what they're doing. I do believe that they were also following the lead of other states that were doing it. I think, you know, I pay a lot of attention to New York, they were number one. They had the highest outcome and we're, we're not far behind them, I mean, for the country. And we have to remember that because sometimes we might be looking at other parts of the country that are opening and we want to be there with them, but they're, they're way behind us. Massachusetts is number three, depending on how you look at it. And it gets, you know, the, the larger communities are the ones that are, that are, that are getting hurt the most. The more dense the population, the higher the risk is. And we're seeing that throughout the whole state. So we do have to do this slow and we have to do it methodically and we have to follow the rules. And it's tricky because everybody wants to just go back to normal. But as I said before, I think we have to remember the new state of normal is going to be how we approach this. And it's going to be something that changes. No different than anything else in our lives. When things have changed, we've adapted. Sometimes kids adapt better than adults though.
Most certainly, I think that is true, yeah. I think it's stuck in our way.
Thank you. Yeah, it's funny, my, my five year old great nephew, he wears his shark mask. And he, if you don't, if your mask is even like a little bit below your nose, he's like, get that mask up. So he, you know, it's, it's interesting to me how, how fast kids adapt. And it's, it's because we're just so used to what we do and what we got comfortable with. And, but I think you've seen changes and people adhering to those changes at grocery stores and being respectful and you know, just in line, and you know, that's just the way it goes, so.
Yeah. Can we talk a little bit about the mayor's budget presentation from earlier this week? And, and your concerns, reaction to that?
So yeah, I was, I applaud the fact that they came in with a budget that was a lot, a lot thinner than I, than, than it has been in the past. My concern though is that, you know, we don't really know where the state is at and we don't really know what our, our, our collections are going to be in that fourth quarter for some of the fees and collections that we've done. But you know, doing my due diligence, I did take a look at where we stood prior to that meeting. I had made some phone calls and got some information about where we stood as a, as far as our collections. And we look like we're in good shape for 2020. So I'm less concerned about 2020, although we asked for that presentation, you know, a good chunk of time ago, about a month ago. When I couldn't get it, I went ahead and did my own kind of investigating research and, you know, without having the information that's going to be coming in, in the next quarter. It's always a quarter behind. I think we're in pretty good shape for 2020. For 2021, we are also going to be basing that budget off of, you know, our assessed values are based on, you know, 15 to 24 months behind. So those taxes that will get set from the budget that we're looking at now will happen in the fall based on your assessed values from last year before the pandemic. So I do think that we have to take that into consideration too as well, because mostly because, and I like to try to explain this to people, if your home is assessed at, you know, a hundred thousand, it's, it's $492,000 was in 2020, it was $492,000 was the average family home. So with this budget, it's, you know, it's, it is going up, but it's, it's a small increment compared to in past, past times, it's 3% higher than it was in, in 2008, I think it was 2.9. So it's, it's a conservative budget. It could be more conservative, I think. But, um, but we're also basing this on the assessed values that will be coming in pre pandemic. So if your house is worth 492, the assessed value will probably go up. I don't know what that percentage will be, but if we do it and based on the past, it will probably go up, you know, it could go up $25,000, so you'll be in the $500,000 range for the average family home in Quincy. So if you're in the average family home, you won't have a tax increase. If you're below that, you might even have, you might even have, and when I say tax increase, I mean the amount that you're paying, not the per 1,000. You might be paying a little bit less, but if your home is worth more than that, you will be paying taxes and we just don't know what that will be. So we can't promise people they won't be paying taxes. It's just, it's based on the average family home. Now, when I'm looking across the city and talking to people, and we all live in different, you know, some people forgetting about what your assessed family home is, your unit in your family. A lot of families depending, have been hit by this, whether they, they're in the food industry, hospitality industry, the financial industry, the marketing industry, the construction industry, and it goes on and on. So there's many families that may be out of work. And that is a sacrifice that's happening in their homes that are beyond them. And the tax is going up, which is normal. They're looking for us to be conservative because they're being conservative in their homes. And to get through this, again, just like I said at the beginning, we all have to work together and we all have to balance that boat. So we have to be careful what we're doing. So I'm going to be looking at those numbers very cautiously and trying to make sure that we, we are thinking about those homeowners, because that is the majority of where we get our taxes from. And we have been very generous in the city of Quincy in the budgets that we've had and we've spent every penny. And we have to actually really be cautious as we go forward, because again, it's not going to be 2020 or even 2021, it's going to be 2022 that you'll see the impact of the pandemic. And we can't keep living paycheck to paycheck, taxpayer to taxpayer.
Yeah. Do you, do you think that some of the larger projects, like say the public safety complex or the special education learning center should maybe slow down and then, and not proceed on the timeline that they are right now?
I have large concerns about that because like I said before, the new state of normal is going to be something that we need to take into consideration. So we're not, we, we basically haven't been in school for the last half of this year. We are anticipating we'll be going back to school, but we don't know what school will look like in the city of Quincy. And to suggest that we should go ahead with the building to build out for special education population and not taking into consideration what the new normal will be, because it's not established yet, Joe. It's a bit of a, a risk, I think, I think. And then the other thing is while we're bringing people back to work, we want to make sure that we have the space to make it safe for everybody who is coming back to work. We, you know, we might have the luxury of having that building and potentially having to use, utilize it for something else, much like they did with St. Mary's School, which is supposed to be an elementary school. And it has been purchased and has sat on our, on our deck for quite some time. And it doesn't seem to be something that is, it's, it's behind everything. It's behind Squanum and it's behind supposedly this new special education building. And we have another building that's being used now as the fire safety training facility. So I do think we have to actually take an inventory of what we have and how we're going to be able to bring people back that work for the city, that have been working potentially at home and bring them back into that environment. And you know, just like every other organization is doing. I mean, following JP Powers for, for my job, I, I investigate a lot of times with what are other people doing? And what's the impact on the economy? What's the impact on the daily households that are happening? And what's going to happen to the footprints of real estate going forward? You'll see like, like large organizations like Barclays that have places in London, New York, Boston, they're basically going to be making their, their, because of success of working from home, they don't need the number of spaces that they have. So it's a different world we're going to be going back into. And organizations are going to look at that bottom line and we should be doing the same thing as the city.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of reassessing, I think, and, and changes going forward. A lot of, a lot more of this type of work that we're doing here, you know, telecommuting and telemedia, you know.
Well, it, but you know, Joe, it actually opens up the opportunities for a lot too. So maybe there'd be a chance that maybe I couldn't come onto your show because I was, I, I might have to be traveling, but now I can because you have the ability to do this. And I think we have to look at the positive as we started in the beginning. We don't have to consider all of the things that we're going through to be a dark cloud that needs to lift so we can go back to where we were before. But we have to take advantages of the things that we learned and how we can make ourselves better and more agile going forward. And you know, the way we were working before, we found out quickly when this happened, we weren't that agile. We didn't have the ability to do at home learning. They had to do memorandum of understanding with the, with the teachers to be able to get that up and running. Many other communities were up and running faster than us, but in the end, I think we got there. But we have to take that into consideration. And that's a change that's a bigger, it's, it's more important than maybe, you know, taking on the risk of building out something that may not meet the requirements going forward. So I think we have to take those things into consideration. It's premature to jump in to large projects, not knowing what our state of normal is going to be.
Okay. Did you, um, did you agree to keep the, the development projects moving throughout the city during this whole crisis? Anne, like the, like the O'Connell Building and the North Quincy Project, things like that? Do you think that was?
Yeah. That was something that I wasn't asked about. So I, I actually didn't think that it was a smart thing to do, although I, I, mostly because I do think, looking in Boston and the congestion and the things that were happening, my concern was more for the people who were working there than it is necessarily and working around there. Because there, again, when you're asked to stay at home, the idea is that we're trying to bring, bring consensus to our homes to stop the spread. And we're, we're still bringing a lot of things into our community that could potentially be bringing other things in. The idea of the stay at home orders were that if you're going to be, if we, if we could all shelter in place and actually, you know, do, do the minimum and, and slow things down, we could actually break that curve. But in the end, you know, I have to say, I think, you know, Quincy did a, did, did a job and they, and they, they, we all, most of us all follow those rules. And hopefully, we don't know necessarily if any of those people on those sites can, you know, contracted. We wouldn't know that necessarily, because if they went home, it would be, you know, if I, if I was coming into a job site from another location, say I was coming in from, you know, from Andover, I would be getting tested and I would be a part of a population in Andover as opposed to potentially the population here. Although they do the contact testing, it's just, it's just, you don't necessarily always know where those things are, are coming into place. I don't know if anybody in the sites were sick, I just know it's, it's very difficult. And I also know that part of the construction that was really difficult is everybody is at home. So people who are working at home that might be near a construction site or even several blocks away when blasting was happening, it was shaking their houses. They wouldn't necessarily have known that that was going on, but now that they're working from home, I got a lot of phone calls about, you know, just those types of things, or starting earlier, working later. But to be fair, it's very hard, I know that, to stop, to stop construction cost money as well. So, so whether I agree or disagree, it happened.
What about the, you know, moving forward, the Fox Rock project downtown? I mean, I know that the city council asked for an update on that a while ago.
Yeah, I asked for that update because we're one year in and we did give them a four year kind of calendar. And this is something that I think is really important in the city of Quincy. If we're going to give challenges or we're going to expect things, we should be able to get regular updates as to where things are happening. And I have to say, I think they were behind schedule for many reasons. Mostly they hadn't made an agreement with, I think it was Coffee Break, that was the last, that building was supposed to be taken down, I think last fall. And was almost a year behind in what they said they were supposed to be doing. And they just came into that agreement recently and congratulations to Coffee Break for being able to successfully move on, because that was a very stressful time for them. And you know, Fox Rock doesn't seem to be, we don't know where things stand. You know, where is the relationship with the, the medical facility that's supposed to be coming in? Will they be coming in? Will there be changes because of the new natural normal that's happening? These are concerns that we have. And you know, I just think it's important that we get these updates to find out where we stand on those things.
Sure. About moving forward with the public transportation, with the MBTA, what are some of your, your concerns about that? You hope they do address?
Yeah, it will be very interesting when they do come back to let us know. I mean, from some of the things I was reading, they were suggesting that, you know, that they'll be queuing, you know, you'll have to wear masks and they'll be queuing you only, they'll only be able to allow so many people on the train. Now, I'm a, I'm an MBTA user, so when you tell me they're only going to allow so many people on the train, that is already a problem. It's problematic because if you're commuting during regular hours, that will be something they'll have to coordinate also with. That's, I think that's one of the reasons why the phased approach and people are being asked, organizations, if you can, and you can survive with employees working from home, they're asking people to, to continue to do that, because if they, if they turn the switch on, I believe it might be at the federal level that the switch turning on kind of statement that gets said, we're going to turn the switch on, everything's going to go back to normal. It's just not possible, because you know, the thing is, is that there's requirements and certain things that we're trying to do to, you know, to prevent things from happening. So a lot of organizations are saying, the organization I work for is saying, you know, we don't know how much longer you're, a lot of people like to go into the office, believe it or not. But, um, you know, the success of what's happening of people working from home, the businesses are still being able to get their, their production going. And I think what they're going to say is, you know, people, if organizations can, they're encouraging their employees to stay at home. And the first phase of people that will go onto the MBTA, they'll figure it out as it goes. And then as that works out, we'll add more. And eventually, hopefully, they'll have the high speed connections back in the red lines that we will be able to see that progress happen. We've been waiting for those connections, so hopefully they'll, it will, it will get a little bit faster. I myself am concerned and I'm not normally, but because I am, you know, at my parents' house a lot, if I go back on the red line, I will not be able to go into their homes. And I, I, so that's a large, I will be driving into Boston if that's, if that's an issue that I have to go into. So, and that's not something I like to do, because I believe in public, you know, transportation.
Yeah. Did you agree with the city's move, Anne, to, to develop the rental assistance programs and then that small business grants program from the, from the CDEBG, Moni?
I, you know, I applaud, with the fact of the matter is, is that a lot of people are hurting. And this is something that it crosses over every segment, you know? When we talk about how, you know, it was a, the subprime mortgages was, 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 it hit everybody, but it didn't hit everybody. It hit really the people who were in the subprime mortgages. This is a pandemic that's hitting across every economic level. It's hitting low, low income to high income, it's hitting every organization. Restaurants and small businesses are very, are hurting. So the fact of the matter is, is that people who work in that industry would be having a hard time. I got a lot of phone calls of people that were very upset because they felt like they were being treated specially. And you know, landlords, landlords that had tenants that were also had lost their jobs and couldn't make their rent payments, you know, they are, and they can't evict. They were in a situation where they weren't being able to benefit from the same thing, where it's basically because of the same issue. But the difference there is that, you know, hospitality workers, when they go to get their unemployment, you know, some people are, they're actually probably potentially with the new federal assistance for unemployment are probably making more than what they would have if they were at work. And that's a challenge as we are seeing the benefit of what the federal government did and even the local government trying to help out Quincy. I do applaud that, because any way we can help people stay afloat as long as we can, that's something we should be doing. And small businesses is the same thing. If it's something that we can help them to get those doors back open, it's important that we do. But the PPP that they were having from the federal level, what they're finding out is that it's now that we're at the phases of opening it up, people are actually making more money until July, so they're less likely to want to come back. So it's a tricky thing. And it's not that they're, they don't want to come back. I think they're worried that if they do come back, will they make what they were making before? It's not, I don't want to go back to work. It's if the restaurants, and that's something that I did learn in my day job, is that, you know, they're suggesting 40%, open up the restaurants to 40% of who you can bring in, but they're only seeing maybe 20% because they're doing surveys and people are saying they're not comfortable to come back. So that employee that would come back will be making even less money than they were making before. So it's a tricky, tricky thing. So to get us to this point, I do applaud what we've done, but we have more work to do, not just here in Quincy, but at the federal government. And it's really important that the people we elect actually, actually stand up and take care of the people they elect, they're elected by. And that's the taxpayers in the city of Quincy for me and the people who live here. And for, for everybody else, it's, it's how we get this economy up and running again in a safe and productive way.
I wanted to ask you, and I know, having served on the school committee, you have a unique perspective on the changes going on with the search for new superintendent, you know, graduations and then looking at the fall. So just trying to get your thoughts on, on that situation.
Yeah, I was very disappointed in Quincy and, and the fact that they weren't as creative as they could have been for graduation. I do have a senior and I, I know, I, it's, I, and I say all the time, I take it personally. And maybe when people do not have seniors, even the superintendent, you know, even though all of his seniors are his seniors, they, it's not that they're not taking it seriously. It's just that, you know, the, the situation is unique. And we all as individuals, again, at the beginning I said, have an opportunity to make a difference and make things better. And I think we were very late to the game of doing that. A lot of other communities were doing that. And you know, I applaud the fact that they listened to the parents and the students, more importantly. And they're trying to figure out how they can make this special. I think what's disappointing in Quincy is that they're looking around students or families might be looking around other communities and seeing a rapid kind of approach to that. And with the superintendent leaving, I think people felt maybe it's because he's leaving. I don't think that's the case. I, I do think it's a case of a situation where they're, you know, I think they were trying to do something and hopefully they will be able to, who knows, maybe we'll even be able to have the graduation. Because we, it seemed like three weeks ago, everything was never coming. three weeks ago, everything was never coming back on, but we're, you know, we're, might even get, be able to get your haircut and go to graduation. But they'll, they'll work through it, I think. And I think that's something through the advocates of the, the kids who are graduating, the parents, the superintendent, the school committee, we're all on the same page. I think that's, that's the greatest thing there. And it's not just, I mean, you know, for me, it's a big graduation from high school is, it's the pinnacle. It's the one time, and that might be the one and only time, really, that a student graduates because they may go on to the military or they may go on to, you know, with, with the pomp and circumstance of graduation. And it's important that you have that because it's celebrating you, the graduate, you know. And when you graduate from college, it's a little different, you know, it's, you know, you do finals and you graduate. You don't, it's a different kind of connection. It's not thirteen years of learning. And I always say this to even my kids, I said, your thirteen years were learning math, learning to read, learning to write, but really, most importantly, learning to advocate for yourself and to be the best you can be as you move on, because now you are a young adult. And that's the graduation that these kids are, and they're so, their confidence level, I truly believe, has been marred by this because they're fearful instead of, and the average seventeen, eighteen year old is not afraid of anything, but all of a sudden, there's a lot of doubt in their heads, and we want to take that away from them and remind them that they are all uniquely fantastic. So, and it's important that they know that they carry a torch that will bring us through some pretty dark times in the future, and I'm relying on a lot of them to do that for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, as we approach the Memorial Day weekend, of course, it, it will look much different. There'll be no parade and no huge ceremony, but I know, like, your dad is a veteran, so I'm sure you have thoughts going into this weekend about recognizing our veterans and those who've given their lives.
Yeah, it is, it's a really important time, and, you know, it's, it saddens me that we won't be able to do that. But I think, again, it goes back to the new state of normal, but just because we can't, does not mean that we cannot take that moment to celebrate and to reflect. And that's really what we need to do in this time, is really take that moment to celebrate and reflect and to, to really remember that there were sacrifices that were made in the past, and there's sacrifices being made right now with, with military around, around the country where they were coming in and they were helping out different areas, even here in the state of Massachusetts. You know, with our, the, the Army Corps coming in to actually help us out. And, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, is that that we need to remind ourselves that we live in a country, although we may sometimes question the diversity or the, not the diversity, the divisiveness of our, our country. The best part of our country is our diversity, but the divisiveness of how people are reacting today instead of all working together, that's the thing that really disheartens me to no end. And that goes all the way to the top. And, you know, I don't care what anybody says, that's not a, that's not a Democrat or Republican thing. It's just a completely disrespect thing that's happening in our country right now for the, for the everyday person, for people's lives and the way we're talking to people. It's just, it's just beyond me that we can actually live in a, in a world, in a country that we live in, that I've been so proud of, to, to have that as our reflection. And we really need to come together and remind ourselves that, you know, Memorial Day is about remembrance for our veterans and thanking those that have served for our country. And to remind each other that we all play a part in making our country as great as it can be.
Anything else you'd like to add today, Anne, before we, we get together in person soon, hopefully?
Hopefully, Joe. Just that I want to wish everybody, you know, some, you know, as we, as we start to transition, I want to remind people to, you know, that we, you know, the way we're gonna be able to get through even the second wave of this is by reminding everybody that we just have to follow just some simple things. And I see a lot of people at the grocery store, people who I used to, I, I used to laugh because I said, some people used to give me big hugs. They said, now we're kind of giving like, hey, how you doing? You know, but the, the reality of it is, is that we're all here together. And, and, you know, we all have to work towards this new state of normal, and we have to do that together and remind, and we, and we can't have everything at once. I always say that too, you know, you know, if I, if you hit the lottery, you can have everything at once, but we're limited by what we can do, and we have to remind ourselves that budgeting is the most important at this time. So if you can, you know, remind yourself that we don't need all those things, but we can actually enjoy each other's company and life through different mediums. So I appreciate this so much today, Joe. And for all the veterans this weekend, I, I applaud and thank, and I, and I just want to wish everybody, you know, safety as we move forward. And health.
If folks would like to reach out to you, Anne, what are some good ways for them to do that?
They can always call me on my cell. I think at this point, the, the whole world has my cell, which is six one seven, seven one nine, seven three, seven eight. And my email at the city is a mahoney@quincy ma.gov. So those are the best ways to reach out to me. I'm also on Facebook, although I always say to people, you know, the, the phone number is the, the fastest way. And it's, it sometimes is busy, so be patient. You can text me too. That's another great way is if you don't get through on the phone, certainly leave a message, but sometimes my voicemail gets filled up. Text me. I always get back in touch. And I want to thank everybody who has reached out to me. I, I hope I've put their minds at ease. And, you know, we all have to work together. And I will say one last thing, one, a couple of people called and they were not hospitality workers, but they're very worried about their landlords raising their rents because that's what they were hearing. And I said, it's now the time that you pick up the phone and call them and let them know that your, your salary has been, you know, has been, has been cut, and they will work with you. I do believe we're in a, in a, in a common thread together where we need to talk to each other, be honest with each other, and work together with each other.
Great. I really appreciate your time, and to you and your family, be well.
Same to you, Joe. Thanks so much. Talk to you soon.
Okay.
Bye.